Hello, this is Dylan Moore with Irida TV. Coming to you today with a very special guest from the frigid climate of North Dakota. We've got state representative Cole Christensen on here who has some super exciting news coming out of North Dakota. And you may be wondering, well, why do I care what's going on in North Dakota? And it has to do with the fact that the country, as I'm sure everybody knows, is still reeling right now from the fact that we just found out that parents are domestic terrorists, according to, I guess, Joe Biden's group and the Attorney General and the National School Board Association. As much as they've tried to take it back, I think the blow has been felt pretty well. And Cole Christensen has been able to introduce a resolution into the House floor of North Dakota to start giving parents their power back. And I wanted to get straight into it because, oh, and I also wanted to mention Cole has received some CSG training. And the conversation may go in that direction. We have Mark Hare on the line here as well, CEO and president of the Center for Self-Governance. And we can zoom in and look what happened here in North Dakota and zoom out and look at, okay, how does this play in the overall game of saving our republic? So Cole, I want to throw it right over to you. And can you tell us a little bit about what just happened on the House floor in North Dakota?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me on the show. It's an honor to be here. This all dates back a few weeks ago when that letter was released by the NSBA, the National School Board Association, asking for Biden administration to investigate parents using the FBI and all these other federal agencies as domestic terrorists. And so obviously, any parent that takes part in their child's future, they're the ones that take care of them. They feed them, they put food on the table, they close, you get the point. It's imperative that the legislature recognizes that the education starts and ends at the home, that the parents are the ones that dictate where their child's futures are going to be going. And so when this letter was put out there, it was appalling for a lot of people, including myself, where I'm in the shoes to actually do something about it. And the way that we're combating this right now is we have to get everyone on the same page. And that was to declare parents as the chief stakeholders in the child's future. So the process to get there, for me, was there was language that was drafted by a gentleman and I believe it was South Carolina who passed this resolution at his local school board meeting, just several sentences long. And says, "Parents are the chief stakeholders in the child's futures. Parents should repudiate weaponizing labels given to them by any agency." And it's a short little segment, you'll pull it up on the screen at some point. But the process to get there, we're in special session in North Dakota. And we had to submit this to the delayed bills committee, which is comprised of five members. And in order to get a bill or a resolution through special session, they had to approve it. So I had to build up the relationship with the chair of the committee, which would be our majority leader. And I said, hey, this is a really big deal. People are looking for somebody that they can look to, to solve this problem. And so I introduced it to the committee. I walked them through what we were feeling. I had previous conversations with all of them about this. And it passed the delayed bills committee unanimously. From there, it went to the House floor to be accepted, then it went to the Joint Technical Corrections Committee. In that committee, there was some discussion by one of the co-chairs on, is this really necessary? Because this is a one-time issue. And respectfully, I wanted to kind of rebut her sentence. I said, this is, this year, we have seen a lot of firsts. So I really hope that we never have to address this again. But regardless, this should be declared by our legislature. Passed the Joint Technical Corrections Committee 15 to 1, came to the House floor. And I wasn't the bill carrier, but I gave a short speech right before the bill were to pass unanimously. And it was a recorded roll call vote, so it was 93-0. Then it went over to the Senate. But shortly before, I was told the superintendent of public instruction, so there was two bills. One was banning critical race theory in the schools, and then this resolution. So those two bills passed simultaneously. And so both would give power back to the parents. And so the superintendent of public instruction was pretty upset that her influence was being diminished. And so I have a great network of parents that are living in North Dakota. I said, hey, I don't know if there's going to be some opposition in the Senate. I need everyone on the same page. Please email your senators and representatives about the resolution and please thank them for supporting their parental rights. So after about 20, 30 minutes went by, senators were walking up to me like, how on earth are you flooding our computers? How did you get people to send this many emails to us? Weird. So the outside pressure was being put in. It was incredible to see. Senators were like, you gotta teach me this trick, dude. I've never seen anything like this. And came to the Senate floor, I talked to the president of the Senate. I said, if there's any discussion about possibly losing funding or anything for this resolution passing, I assure you that those are just rumors and it's not true. Came to a voice vote in the Senate and it passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. I hope this is the first and the last time that we have to address the supremacy of our parents for their child's future. Our nation is pushed back against the bullies in the school system. And now it's time to push back against the bullies in our federal government who threaten the very fabric of our nation, the family. The governor of Florida and South Dakota set the precedent for us to follow as they continually stand their ground against these bureaucratic bullies. The real domestic terrorists are the ones that are bullying and blocking parents from their rightful place as primary stakeholders. Let's stand with the parents and show the country that North Dakota stands with our valued parents and defends their rights to be heard. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any further discussion? The House has before it, for final consideration, House Concurrent Resolution 3049. The clerk will open the key and you may record your vote. Has every member voted? Do any members wish to change their votes? The key will be closed and the clerk will take the record. The final vote shows 92 yays, 0 nays, 2 absent and not voting. House Concurrent Resolution 3049 is declared passed.
Since it's a resolution, it doesn't have to be signed by the governor. But the point being is that sets the precedent for every single parent all across, at least in North Dakota right now, the similar legislations being drafted by other states. But that gives the parents the power at their local school board meetings to say, this is what our state legislature believes. Will you pass this resolution declaring that we are the chief stakeholders in our child's future? And so it's a cannonball effect where it gives a lot of momentum to parents reclaiming their influence. Because as a lot of people well know, it's, you meet a lot of resistance at some of these school board meetings. It all depends on who's in control of them. But regardless, this is, this is getting the ball moving in the right direction. So the credit belongs to the gentleman and I believe it was South Carolina and to Mark Hare for helping me walk through the process of what to do next. And so this is a result of Mark telling me to do something and I went and did it. So Mark, if you have any comments on that.
Well, actually, I wanted to turn that over to Mark for obviously any comments that you might have. But I also wanted to see, so we've got the state legislator in North Dakota to, you know, declare this resolution that parents are the primary stakeholders in their children's futures and which gives us, gives them power to go to the school boards and say, look, the legislator said it, so you know, sign this resolution that we're the primary stakeholders. I guess the natural question arising is, okay, the state legislature and the school boards have said that the parents are primary stakeholders. What does that mean?
Mark, do you want to take that one on?
Yes, so there's a lot to unpack there. But let me go back to what Cole was saying about South Carolina. So, you know, the nation is with 50 states and we have 14,000 school districts in the United States, 90,000 school board members. And each of those states govern how their public education is carried out. So how it's funded, how the curriculum is, the school board members are elected, all those things are governed by the state government. And so parents, for a number of decades, are slowly, through attrition, not by any conspiracy, just slowly having their parental influence weakened. And so when the mask mandates and the critical race theory and the comprehensive sex ed and all of these symptoms that start to impact their child's future, the parents obviously, emotionally connected to their kids are concerned about that future, become involved politically. And so across the United States, we've seen thousands of parents coming to school boards going, what are you teaching our kids and why won't you show? And then, then the school boards having these reactions and this creating this contention, right? And then the NSBA sends their letter out. Okay. The question that really ultimately needs to be asked is, who is the primary? Who is the chief stakeholder in a child's future? It's a legitimate argument, not an argument in a negative sense, it's a genuine debate question. Okay, so we're having this conflict between the school boards and the NSBA and now AG Garland and the FBI and domestic terror, you know what I mean?
Right.
Well, hey, guys, let's come to the table and let's answer the question. Let's just answer the question. Who is then the chief stakeholder in a child's future? Is there one? Is there a chief? Is there a primary? Is there someone at the top of the apex? Or is it equal? Is it co-parenting? Is it, is it what's called a full partnership? So the purpose of this language, this critical two words, primary stakeholder, is to bring parents back to the table of, hey, do I have any influence in my child's future? Yes or no? Is America going to go down the path where the parents are just a steer and a cow producing a calf and the calf belongs to the rancher? Right? And so in South Carolina, Center for Self-Governance students were having this question. And fortunately, they took our advice and started asking that. They went to their school board and there's a three-minute video produced by the gentleman from South Carolina where they read the resolution. They were not combative or confrontational. And within 72 hours, that school board was put in a position where they had to unanimously pass that resolution.
Right. Or, because what happens if they don't? They just look like an insane guy running for governor in Virginia, right?
Yeah, they look like a governor in Virginia or a gubernatorial candidate who says, I don't think parents should tell schools what to teach their kids. And parents are going, whoa, 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 whoa. And then you've got the NSBA, parents, we have threats and violence. And the violence that, the data that they were using as violence was like some guy whose daughter was raped. And he was coming, he didn't even come there for the critical race theory arguments. He was there as like, he wanted to be like, hey, it's been over a month. Where's the investigation in the rape of my daughter?
Right.
And they had him arrested. And then the NSBA used that as one of their evidence of domestic terrorism in America. Like, whoa, wait a second. And so now you have like Virginia, they had a 10% swing. And that's the most Democrat, Democrat party-wise political division in the state of Virginia. It did a plus 10% swing in favor of Republican Party there. That's huge, you guys, in terms of political swings. And it's all, it all came down to non-Republican parents going, wait a minute, am I the chief stakeholder at all anymore? And so South Carolina is doing, North Dakota and just in Washington, in the last 72 hours, the Washington School, Washington State Republican Party unanimously passed the same resolution. The first school board in the state of Washington, Tenasket School Board, which is a little poduncle, they just passed unanimously within the last 72 hours, this resolution.
Awesome.
This is not a partisan thing. It's a non-partisan question. And you have to ask yourself, do I believe, whether you're Democrat or Republican, independent or apolitical, that you as a parent are the chief stakeholder in your child's future? That is a galvanizing, uniting question. It brings people together. And I think that's an opportunity we have in our country is to bring unity back into the equation of our families, our parenting, our relationships in our communities and kind of dissecting this kind of negative partisan division that's kind of been seeping through the veins of our culture.
Yeah. So is there a, because I'm thinking of which direction I want to go here. So the first and foremost thing is you brought up language and how important it is, who controls that language? Right? Can you briefly mention why it's so important for language in general and specifically that this term, primary stakeholder, to be, to get put back into that, into the seat of parents? Even though, because, you know, my first critical thought goes to, or my first antagonistic thought goes to, well, okay, you've called the parents primary stakeholders. What did that change? Like what power, what power did they gain? And I mean, I know the answer to it, but I was wondering, can you talk a little bit more about why language controls which direction we're going?
So if you'll notice in the resolution from North Dakota, it talks about that there's partnership and in some cases, parents are, what this does is this opens up the Pandora's box, this resolution. It doesn't have any teeth.
Right.
But that's not the point. It's to open the door. What is the door? The door is to get the parents back to the table of being at the head of the table or at least at the table. Because right now, they're not at the table. They're trying to get to the table. So we have a couple of things to move forward on. And that is the statutory language. Like in North Dakota and Washington State and South Carolina, there'll be statutory description of what parental involvement means.
Right.
Like state law. So for next on Cole's plate and the North Dakota plate.
Which is what I wanted to get to.
Whatever, 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 whatever these states do, and this is beautiful now because now Cole and his, and his team of parents, because they don't matter whether they're, what partisan group, they're just parents who, hey, you're the primary stakeholder. We're on this together. Is now they can start looking through the state law of North Dakota and identify all of the language that literally legally has trip, tripwires where parents are not the primary stakeholder. And so now they're going to have to start, they're going to have to do the hard work. I mean, this was the easy part.
Right.
Right? Because resolutions have no teeth. The hard part is the next seven years, they're going to have to secure primary stakeholdership. They have to secure it now. They've opened the door, now they have to go secure it. And that is look through the state law, identify what the definition of parental involvement is, identify any sort of amendments they need to make to that. Secondly is they need to go to their school boards and get them to now take the resolution and turn it into policy, convert it from resolution to policy. Well, actually, now that the legislature of North Dakota has done this, the 244 school districts, the parents can now go and say, pass this resolution. Okay, that's, that's kind of the next thing. And then going forward in the next two to seven years, they're going to have to start working on statutory language to actually make parents primary stakeholders. And what, when can those be tripped up? Like a parent who's sexually abusing their kid or not feeding their children, you know, what is that, where is the line between, hey, you're no longer a primary stakeholder because you've, you're molesting your child.
You're abusing.
You're abusing. Versus those who aren't doing those things, you know, they are primary. The next thing is, is the advisory boards in North Dakota and Washington, South Carolina, the school districts can have these advisory boards. Well, hey, why not get all these parents on these advisory boards? Right? Start, start getting the parents, hey, pass the resolution, put us on the advisory. If there aren't an advisory board, let's create one called the Parents Are Primary Stakeholders Advisory Board. Right? Okay. Then there's the state law. And then the fourth thing is the North Dakota School Board Association is getting them to disconnect their membership from National School Board Association or getting the school districts to withdraw their membership from the North Dakota School Board Association. That means creating an independent school board association for, for independent school boards that are connected to their parents so that they can share curriculum and standards and ideas and funding and liability questions within their community now. Bringing the parents back to the table. Hey, how do we fund the liability? How do we fund our schools? Parents aren't involved because it's all this money coming from Bill Gates Foundation or the federal government mandates. If you don't wear the mask, we're going to take away your money, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Right.
The four things, to sum it up. Go to their school districts and get them to pass the school board resolutions now. Identify the advisory boards that exist. And if they don't, form one, get the parents on them. Look at the state law to identify the parental involvement, what that means, and looking for amendment opportunities. And then number four is figuring out these external associations like NSBA, North Dakota School Board Association, and figuring out, do we need to create our own so that we can maintain parents as the primary stakeholders in their child's future?
That's an awesome plan. And then I wanted, now that that's, that whole scene has been drawn out, I wanted to get Cole's input on this now. So we passed the resolution. For you personally, being a state representative, what's your next step in North Dakota?
Well, it's getting the parents on board with what they have to do. So there's already a great network of people that have been waking up and realizing that either their rights are being taken away as parents or against these mandates. So there's a lot of people that are, you could say, very upset about what's going on. So for me personally, I have to direct them to the right avenues, whether that's to get educated on what to do next or to help them. Because there's a great network of CSG students that are starting to pop up in North Dakota, like go talk to this guy, this is the step that you have to take to pass this resolution at your school board. And that's kind of where I believe the next step is, as far as where I go in this thing, because I'm not a parent yet. So this was to give the parents ammunition to take back control. So the, I guess it was planned, or is the first step in a big chess game, you know?
And speaking of that chess, oh, sorry, finish your point.
So I'm, I'm just excited to be a part of it.
Awesome. And then, speaking of that chess game, so we were, we were having a conversation before, before the record button was hit. And I heard mentioned that you got accosted in the hallway by somebody. Can you tell us that story? Because I want to lead into, talk more about this chess game.
Yes, Superintendent to Public Instruction, she's a very sweet lady. I have a great relationship with her. I had heard that she was upset from some people in the Senate. And so I went to go talk to her, you know, just as a, because I'm friendly to everyone, unless you give me a really good reason not to be. And so I went up and said, hey, how was your day going? You know, kind of leading into it. And there's like a switch flipped. And she's, she said, just for your information. And then she ran me through the entire process from her point of view. And you could tell it was, it was a combination between the parents as primary stakeholders because that diminishes her influence on the school boards and the teachers. And then the critical race theory bill that got through, so it prohibits any of that language from being taught in North Dakota. So it's not just critical race theory, it expands into what that means.
Right.
And so between those two things, it had her pretty razzed. And she was, she gave me an earful of it, which it wasn't necessarily she was fed up with me specifically, it was just that she's feeling the symptoms of power being given back to the parents.
Right. And then, I mean, so you mentioned she's friendly and you mentioned you're on good terms with her and she's, she's a nice person, but even still, she's power hungry. Right? She, you know, like, I want to, I want to have the control to do CSG. I mean, I see, I wish she had the control to do CSG, to do CRT, Critical Race Theory, and take away power from the parents. And then just the, because you know, I brought up the question, you pass this resolution, so what? Well, the superintendent of public instruction seems to think, so what? Right? She's not very happy about it at all. So in terms of this broader chess game, you know, we've got some players, some players, a lot of players, more players on their side than on our side, who have been making these moves for a long, long time to get control away from where the republic originally put the control. We'll say, you know, the, the parents in this example pulling this power away, pulling this power away. And suddenly with just, I'm not going to call it an easy move, but just in, in the grand scheme of things, it was kind of, kind of an easy move. Just one easy move just completely gave this one person at least a very bad hair day. Right? So these things are super duper impactful. And you know, going on what, what Mark was saying, it's, you know, I don't know why two to seven years was the, was the timeframe that you gave. It sounds like you had a very specific reason why it was two to seven years. But moving into the future, you know, the, the other players are going to start pushing back and the, the parents and representatives like yourself, the people within government like yourself, you know, need to get ready that there's going to be pushback and start playing this game of, you know, how do we push back? And you know, one of the starting points is being able to control this language. Right?
Absolutely. And I think you frame it in a way where it's a losing argument for them. If they argue that parents don't need to have their influence over their children, what does that do to the, all the parents? It's like it gets them riled up, be like, no, we are the primary and chief stakeholders in our child's futures and their education. So if you don't do what we as the chief stakeholders want you to do, we're either A, going to get you off of our school boards, or we're going to create the alternative, which could be homeschooling, it could be, you know, the possibilities are endless. But it's, it's, it's a losing narrative for them. That's why it passed unanimously. Even if parents or some of the representatives or senators disagreed with it, they knew that if they voted against it, it would be used as campaign material. Because they stood in the way of parents. And I framed it in my speech right before the bill passed, I said, the real domestic terrorists are the ones that are bullying and blocking parents from their rightful place as chief stakeholders.
Yeah, they just saw what happened in Virginia. Right? Sorry, I interrupted you again. Yeah.
No, you're good. Yeah.
Great. So before we wrap up here, I wanted to ask, what's your advice? I want to ask you both the same question, but I'll start with Cole. Cole, what's your advice for everyone else outside of North Dakota, particularly on this subject? How does everybody else start reclaiming, how do the parents in all the other states start reclaiming the power over their children's futures and educations again?
Absolutely. The, probably the best thing that you can do is read the resolution, read the, how the language is very carefully put in there. You can copy that language or you can have a very similar rendition of that. Then it comes down to you organizing in your local area of influence and you get parents on the same page, be like, hey, because you, you know, people that go to the, the same schools, you're like, we need to pass this resolution at our schools because I feel like our influence is being diminished. And it just has to be super simple. Do not make it complex because it is not. You get parents on the same board, we are here because we want you to declare that we are the chief stakeholders. You have somebody read the resolution and before all this happens, build the relationship with the people on your school board. And don't frame it in the, in the way where if you don't vote for this, we're going to, you know, it's be like, thank you for supporting parents as the chief stakeholders. Frame it in the way where they give, where you give them credit and they can take credit. Because it's, I could care less if my name is on the resolution or if somebody else is, that's getting the ball moved forward, which is the end goal. So if other people want to take credit for it, I could care less. I'm, that's not why I'm in this position. And the other thing is get in touch with CSG because you're going to shift your focus from the rat race of partisan politics to actually understanding the systematic politics, which is where our, our republic is being eroded from. And so I would highly encourage you eroded from. And so I would highly encourage you to get in touch with Mark, because he took me from ground zero to actually being effective on the state level. And that was all within a year of me being elected. And so you don't have to be a representative or a senator to make a huge difference. You just have to be dedicated and willing to put in the effort. So that's the exciting part.
That is super exciting. And then, Mark, did you have any follow up comments on that, on this guy that you, I mean, this guy that you trained? Feel proud about that?
Well, he's, he's the one on the basketball court. All we did was coach. And the key is, is that he slam dunked it by building the relationships. I want to reiterate what he said, building the relationships. There's no confrontational approach here. It's a simple question, who's the primary stakeholder in a child's future? It's all we're asking. And then he put forward this resolution. Do you, do you, let's identify who doesn't support parents as primary stakeholders. Let's, let's have that conversation. And then, and then secondly, parents now have the ability, with this resolution, because of Cole's effort, they, in the state of North Dakota, parents are now in the driver's seat. It's for them to lose, quite frankly. They can go to the 244 school districts now and say, who's the primary stakeholder in child's future? My name is, my name is Mark Herr, and I'm speaking before the school board tonight. Thank you guys so much for supporting this resolution, whereas parents are primary stakeholders, you know what I mean?
Mm hmm.
And then sit down. And then they have to make a choice as a school board. It puts them in an untenue problem, and that is, you're not trying to pit the parents against the school board. And I really want everyone to remember this. The school board has their hands tied because of all those external influences that are connected. There's statutory definition of parental involvement. There's the National School Board Association, North Dakota School Board Association. All we're doing is helping you as parents. Get your foot in the door, identify who doesn't support parents as primary stakeholders. So then together as a team, your parental team can start disconnecting or diluting or diverting some of those external influences that are eliminating your influence as a parent.
Right.
So get involved. Build the relations. Learn the system. Build a team and be strategic. Don't be confrontational. Just ask the question. And, and let, let, let the cards fall, because in the end, in the end of the game here, the parents are chief, or they're not.
Right. Right.
So I just want to say also to Cole, it's like, I don't, I don't want to be like, I'm proud of you. No, 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 dude. Slam dunk, man. Woo! Like a team, we're on the sidelines going, yeah, it was badass. You know what I mean? It was so awesome. And then now it's inspiring others. And then, and then you took it from, you just took it from a South Carolina school board, and you drove it up to the legislature. And that's the other thing, I guess I'll conclude here is, guys, the sky's the limit. School board, go to your county commissions, go to your city councils, take it to your state legislature, go, go, go to your sheriff's association. You know, just take this as far as you possibly want to. The sky is the limit. And Cole really sets the standard of what that limit looks like. It's endless. It's, it's an open door now. Thank you so much, Cole. It's an open door for parents of the United States to go through if they choose.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mark.
Awesome. Well, with that, I think we, we covered the, the issue pretty well. Cole, I'd love to have you back on at some point in the future to hear what's going on in North Dakota. And with that, I'd like to thank you both for coming on. Cole Christensen, state representative of North Dakota, and Mark Herr, president and CEO, or executor, I don't know what you're calling yourself, king of
Mark.
For Center for Self Governance. And this is Dylan Moore with Irida TV. Thank you for watching, and we'll see you guys next time.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.